Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the legislative session of the Wycomico County Council meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, that came to come, that will be done, like the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I would like to remind everyone that even though the county council is a meeting in person as allowed under the governor's COVID-19 state of emergency order, you can watch the council meetings remotely. The meetings can be viewed live on PAC 14, or you can watch replays of the meetings on YouTube PAC 14 and on the county's website. The public may still attend the meetings in person, but we are encouraging people to stay home until the current public health concern has passed. If you plan to attend the meetings in person, you'll be screened upon entering the government office building, and you'll be required to wear a face covering and follow social distancing protocols of staying at least six feet apart. The county council is monitoring the COVID situation and will reassess whether or not to return to virtual or hybrid meeting format under our current circumstances. The local health officer, Ms. Lori Brewster, is in attendance tonight. And Ms. Brewster, would you like to give a statement on the vaccinations or anything on COVID that is important?
Thank you for inviting me to give our daily update. Wycomico County has been on an uptick in our positivity rate and our case rate. Today, we're at 14.0% positivity rate. The state's positivity rate's at 9.2. We began that uptick right around the week of Christmas, and it appears that we're going to continue that uptick for a little while longer because we're still seeing holiday travel. The entire lower shore is well above the state average. Our hospitalizations are still on the increase as well, as are our deaths. We've had 84 deaths to date for Wycomico County and had several over the past week. We had four in the last 24 hours. On the vaccine front, there's two vaccine manufacturers that we have vaccine of in Wycomico County. The first is Pfizer, and that's the ultra-cold vaccine. The other is Moderna. The hospital received their Pfizer doses very early on after the vaccine was approved and they began vaccinating. The health department actually received their shipment of a very few doses on 12/21, and we began administering it on 12/22. We also held a clinic on New Year's Eve, and it was fairly well-attended considering that a lot of people were concerned that they would get sick. We have ramped up clinics with vaccination clinic yesterday, Thursday, and Friday, and we will continue doing three days of vaccinations each week. And our testing continues on Tuesday and Wednesdays, and the desire for testing right now post-holiday is great. We are currently in Phase 1 of vaccine administration, which includes licensed, registered, and/or certified health professionals, first responders, long-term care staff, and residents, as well as individuals working the vaccination clinics. Once we have completed Phase 1A, we will move on to Phase 1B, which would include individuals with chronic conditions and the elderly. We did something a little different for clinics next week, and we've had to revert. Our clinics up to this point had been private clinics where we send out the link to the providers to sign up, and we decided that we would try to make this a public clinic beginning next week, and that did not work. Within two minutes, we had 18 people registered, and 17 of them were from across the bay, and they said that they couldn't get the vaccine there, and that's why they came and registered with Wycomico County. We have canceled those appointments so that Wycomico County residents can be served first. So that's what's currently happening on the vaccine front. We have, between yesterday and Thursday and Friday, we have about 500 doses going out into people's arms. Prior to that, we had 247 doses that were given on 12/22 and 12/31.
Does the council have any comments or questions for Ms. Brewster? Mr. Cannon?
Are you seeing any trends as far as whether the more recent cases are, let's say, work-related or family-related? Anything to distinguish?
What we're seeing is family gatherings creating the spread of COVID, as well as travel out of state.
So they're going out of state and bringing it back?
Yes.
You think?
The governor doesn't have any restrictions on leaving the state, does he? I know he had a conference a little while ago.
There was a recommendation not to leave the state, and if you did, then you needed to quarantine for 14 days and get tested. But there's no order.
Right. Okay. Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Brewster.
Thank you.
Ms. Hurley, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. On the consent agenda this evening, we have legislative minutes from December the 15th, 2020, open work session minutes from November the 17th, 2020 pertaining to the letter from the Wycomico County Public Libraries, open work session minutes from December the 1st, 2020 on amending the fiscal year 21-25 CIP and the 21 budget to include funding for a new scale house at the Newland Park landfill, open work session minutes from December the 1st, 2020 on the implementation of a Horizon program, and closed work session minutes from November the 17th, 2020 pertaining to personnel. This is to discuss an appointment to a position that this public body has jurisdiction over.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, consent agenda passes unanimously. At this time, we have proclamations to recognize the Chop Tank Electric 2020 Youth Tour Program winners. If we could have them come in one at a time. The first one, Alyssa Bolts from Mardella High School. You can go over to the podium.
I always like to recognize our youth when they are involved in community service, especially since they will be taking care of us when we get old. The Youth Tour is a once-in-a-lifetime trip to Washington, D.C., an opportunity to gain leadership training and provides opportunities that build connections and learning skills that assist in future career paths. Ms. Bolts, thank you very much for your community service.
Can we have Quinn Handel from the Salisbury School?
It's amazing to see these next two girls. I remember when they were running around in diapers in my backyard, so it's good to see them.
Congratulations.
Ms. Kang?
And can we have Lauren Kang from the Salisbury School? There she is.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And at this time, can we have a representative from the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office? This proclamation is in reference to Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Whereas across the country, on January 9th each year, citizens take the lead to show support on National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And whereas law enforcement officers of every rank and file have chosen a profession that puts their life on the line every day for their communities, they have answered a call to public service that is demanding and often unappreciated. And whereas the law enforcement officer's duties command dedication, their jobs are often thankless and take them away from their families for long hours, and rarely do they know what their days have in store for them. They often are only paid emergency resource, or the only paid emergency resource a community has, and work in coordination with other organizations to make communities safer. Now, therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims January 9th, 2021 as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in Wycomico County, and encourages all citizens to take the opportunity to thank them for their service. Done this 5th day of January, 2021, and I speak for all the council members on this council that they really do appreciate your service. And this proclamation is signed by all, including the acting county executive, Mr. Pesota. So thank you. Say something?
Not really, but I will. It remains, remains an honor of my lifetime to serve the great citizens of Wycomico County. I mean it from bottom of my heart. On behalf of the men and women of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, especially my command staff, Captain Babe Wilson, Captain Todd Richardson standing to my immediate left, we want to thank each and every one of you for recognizing law enforcement, not just Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, but all the men and women who serve in law enforcement in this county. We greatly appreciate this recognition. God bless you. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize some guests that we have in the house. We have, from the Board of Education, Mr. Gene Malone, and we have Dr. Donna Hanlon from the Wycomico County Public Schools. So welcome with us. Mr. Taylor?
Good evening. Two items for tonight that are both public hearing. The first is Legislative Bill 2020-14, an Act to Reorganize and Transfer the County Payroll Functions and Payroll Personnel from the Direction and Control of the Department of Human Resources to the Direction and Control of the Department of Finance. This is a public hearing, and I know this, I think I saw her earlier, Ms. Pam Ollyn is here, if there are any questions.
Yes. At this time, we're going to open the floor to the public hearing. If we have any public comments for Legislative Bill 2020-14, please go to the podium and state your name and residence of county. You have any comments? Okay. That said, I'm going to close the floor to this public hearing. At this time, we need a motion to approve Legislative Bill Number 2020-14.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Davis. Do we have a second? By Mr. Hastings. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor of Bill Number 2020-14, go by roll call. Mr. McCain?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Holloway?
Aye.
Ms. Ackley?
Aye.
Mr. Hastings?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So this Legislative Bill Number 2020-14 passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor?
Second item for public hearing is Legislative Bill 2020-15, an Act to amend Chapter 15 titled Emergency Management to Provide for Article 4-911 Telephone Systems to Comply with the Maryland Code. And Mr. David Shipley is here, if there are any questions on that.
All right. At this time, we're going to open the floor to the public hearing. There any public comments? Go to the podium and please state your name and county of residence. Have any public comments? All right. Going to close the floor to these public comments. This time, we need a motion to approve Legislative Bill Number 2020-15.
So moved.
So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of Legislative Bill 2020-15 by roll call. Mr. McCain?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Holloway?
Aye.
Ms. Ackley?
Aye.
Mr. Hastings?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right. Ms. Hurley? Everything passed unanimously on this bill?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing on the capital improvement program for the county for the period of July the 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026, and the capital budget for fiscal year 2022. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times and posted on the county's website indicating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 p.m. I will read each department and the totals for the proposed capital projects through fiscal year 2026. Once I finish going over the department totals for the capital projects, if anyone has any comments, please go to the podium and state your name, county of residence, and then provide your comment. There are copies of the capital improvement program summary page on the table as you walk in the front door for those in the audience that would like to follow along. Starting with the Sheriff's Office, it's $19,660,043. Health Department, $927,000. Civic Center, $2,100,000. Recreation and Parks, $5,995,000. Emergency Services, $1,474,357. Department of Corrections, $1,360,000. General Services, $3,070,000. Public Library, $7,422,202. You may.
Can you go one at a time so we can continue social distancing? I'm sorry? Have a handout? That's fine. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is George Demko. I'm on the board of the Wycomico County Public Library, and I'm speaking in support of the budget for building a new building for the Pittsville branch of the Wycomico Public Library. The Pittsville branch was started in 2005, I believe. It's in a trailer, it's still in a trailer after 16 years. The handout that you're receiving, I'll wait until you, everyone, has a copy, because I want to address some items on that handout. I'm not going to go through it in detail. I know time is limited, but I want to point out some things. I hope that you will take the time, however, to look at the information in there because I think it's very important. I'm going to highlight some of the things in this handout. First of all, I want to read the comprehensive plan, 2019, 2019 comprehensive plan for the city of, the town of Pittsville. It says, "Pittsville's vision is a town living environment that supports the health, safety, and welfare of its residents and financially sustainable improvements that strengthen the physical structure of neighborhoods, enhance the sense of community, increase property values, and expand employment opportunities." This handout that I've given you goes through how the Pittsville Library fits in with this plan. I'd like to look, first of all, if you don't mind, look at Page 3, the third page of the handout, if you can, near the top. It says, "Services the Pittsville Library currently provides that are not otherwise available on the east side of Wycomico County." I think it's important to point out that this is a very underserved area in the county. And so the branch provides a lot of services that are not available elsewhere for these residents. For example, for example, copying, printing, scanning, free faxing service, free Wi-Fi service, two laptops within the building, and four laptops for lending. There's also free notary service, and this is not available except from, for people who have bank accounts in the area. Job search assistance, and free programs and instructions for all ages, including youth programs. So this library serves more than just the services that you usually think of as a library. It's more than lending books and putting out CDs. It's really a county service, community services building, and that's the way I think it should be viewed. The current building, as I said, was, is a trailer. I think it's been in its current location, current size, since 2007. It's about 1,400 square feet. It's greatly under, it no longer serves the purposes that it was intended for. The area has grown. The building is old. It's inefficient, and it's expensive. It costs us over $1,000 a month to rent the building, and that expense is expected to increase. It's been increasing. Over the past six years, it's increased 40%. So we expect an increase in the next few years of, up to $2,000 per month. So I think this building has outserved its usefulness. If you look at the last page of the handout, for example, very last page, which just has a couple of things, one thing on it, says aging facility. It says repairs, including leaking roof, softening of floor, repair of door handles due to shifting, deck ramp, I'm sorry, deck ramp partial replacement, and freezing pipes. So you can see that this building no longer serves its purpose. I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that we would like to do in this building that we can't do. One of the things we would like to do is have a public meeting room. This would serve as classroom space, for example, for GED classes, meeting places for nonprofit groups such as Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. We would like to increase program space, particularly for children. Right now, our programs are limited to, the total capacity of that trailer is 14 people, according to the fire marshal. We didn't realize that when we had some of these programs in the past, and we've had up to 35 children in that trailer. So we would like to have capacity to have programs for children and adults. We don't have that right now. We could provide meeting space for lots of organizations. We'd like to have classroom space, additional computer space, and additional job search space. So all of these facilities are not presently available in a significant way. I want you to look again at Page 3 briefly, and I won't go through it because I know my time is limited, but I want you to, I want you to point out where it says, I want to point out where it says notable mentions. It mentions some of the previous support that has been shown in the community for this library, going back to 2010, where they had the Save the Pittsville petition, over 3,000 signatures, 2019, where over, everyone who attended that town hall meeting supported the public library. So there's a lot of community support for this library. And then finally, under funding, the total cost of a new library, this is over fiscal year 2023 and 2024, would be about 7,200, oh, sorry, $7.2 billion. And I realize that's a lot of money, but it's important to realize that 84% of that cost would come from the state grant. So approximately 6.1 million would come from the state, and 1.1 million would come from the county. And that's over the two fiscal years that I mentioned. So the county's cost would only represent 16% of the total cost. I think that's all I have time to mention right now, but I'll be happy to answer any questions either tonight or later on, if you have any.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more comments on the libraries? Okay, Ms. Hurley?
Next, we have the Public Works Engineering at $2,750,000. Public Works Roads, that's $7,250,000. Warwick Community College at $6,3,525. The Board of Education at $35,280,000.
Hurley? Anyone speak? Are you done with the Board of Ed?
I am not. I am done with the Board of Ed, but I think we have people here to speak from the Board of Ed.
Yeah, they want to. I didn't know if you were going to continue on.
Go ahead.
I didn't want you to be interrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Dodd, members of the council, Donna Hanlon, the superintendent of schools. First, let me start by just telling you how much I appreciate, how much we all appreciate your support of our public schools. I'm going to be brief tonight because, as you know, we met in December just before the holidays to discuss our capital improvement plan and our capital budget request, and I am here simply to represent the board and represent thousands of parents and staff and students who would greatly benefit from your support of the county executive's capital, proposed capital budget for Wycomico County Board of Education and its public schools. So as we have communicated previously in great detail in Wycomico County Public Schools, we take great pride in making data-driven decisions, and that includes the prioritization of our school facility needs, all of which goes to benefit and bring about high-quality instruction in our schools. And while we have many needs in terms of our facilities and our capital plan, and they're outlined in the capital plan, I will just quickly highlight our three priorities. First of all, Beaver Run. The board's FY 2022 request of $4.7 million is the last year of funding for the project. We're excited. That construction is well underway. If you've happened to have been down that way, you will have seen that for yourselves, and we do look forward to opening that new facility in the fall of '22. Mardella and Middle, Middle and High School, as you know, we received state planning approval for the project last spring, and we truly appreciate the county's support in keeping that project on track. And we're pleased to share that just before the holidays, we started the design process for that major renovation in addition to Mardella. The board's FY 2022 request of $10 million will allow us to move into construction once the design process is completed, and of course, pending construction funding allocations from the state. And finally, we appreciate the county's FY '21 commitment to Westside Intermediate Roof Project. Unfortunately, as you know, the state has deferred their portion of that project due to fiscal construction. due to fiscal constraints for many years or multiple years. But it's important that we move forward with that project, not just to address the needs at Westside, but also so that we can continue on track with the deferred needs of our overall roof asset management plan. And so the board's request for one point seven million dollars will allow us to complete that project. So I will just conclude by once again telling you how much we appreciate the cooperative working relationship that we now have with the county executive's office and continued relationship with the council. We understand that there are many needs in the county, but your willingness to work with us, to meet with us, to listen to us about the needs of our school system makes the world of difference to our students and greatly benefits our county as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. Do we have any one else from the board? All right. Ms. Harley, thank you.
Next, we have the Department of Tourism at six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Public Works Solid Waste Division, thirteen million, nine hundred thousand. And the airport at sixty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And this brings us to a total proposed capital project cost through fiscal year 2026 to one hundred and seventy million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. If there are any additional public comments, if you can just please go to the podium and provide your comments.
Do we have any public comments for the capital improvement program? Okay, this concludes public comments. The council will start having work sessions starting January nineteenth on the CIP, so we will let the public know. Ms. Harley?
Next on the agenda is Resolution Number O One, 2020. This is extending the date for the adoption of the fiscal year's twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty C, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-six Capital Improvement Program from the third Tuesday of February to June the first, 2021. Per Charter Section 704-G, the council is to adopt a capital improvement program on or before the third Tuesday of February, and Charter Section 707 provides that the council may change any of the dates set forth in Charter Section 704 by resolution. This resolution extends the date for adopting the capital improvement program to June the first, 2021, so that the fiscal year 2022 budget and the CIP can be adopted at the same time. Due to the uncertainty regarding various capital projects and the potential impact of state legislation in the upcoming 2021 session, it would be best to allow these budgets to be adopted simultaneously.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number O One dash two, 2021?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. McCain. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number O One dash 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number O One dash 2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Next is Resolution Number O Two dash 2021. This is denoting persons for training under the Open Meetings Act. State law requires each public body to designate at least one individual who is an employee or a member of the public body to receive training, other requirements of the open meetings law. This resolution is designating all council members to receive the training. The training is to be completed within ninety days after being designated, and the training can be taken online or it is offered by the Maryland Associations of Counties. You only have to take the training one time, so if you've already taken the training, you do not have to retake it again.
All right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number O Two dash 2021?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. McCain. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number O Two dash 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number O Two dash 2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number O Three dash 2021. This is to increase the 911 fee to one dollar and thirty cents per telephone number on July first, 2021, pursuant to Maryland Code, Public Safety Article Section One dash three eleven, to cover the increased cost of operating the Wycomico County 911 system. And we have Mr. Dave Shipley here, Director of Emergency Services, if there are any questions.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number O Three dash 2021?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. McCain. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Mr., yes. Mr. Shipley, can you come up, please?
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, Mr. Holloway?
Mr. Holloway.
Thank you.
Give me a live mic, so I have to push the button. From, from seventy-five cents to a dollar thirty, that's a pretty big increase.
The law that's been adopted in 2019 allows every county to recoup the entire cost of its 911 system. And our system costs one point five million. So we can, the fee that we're getting right now only brings in eight hundred, roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we, if we increase the fee per the Maryland law, we will cover the entire cost.
But we're not mandated to increase it?
No, sir.
What would the cost be to just cover the cost? Does that, does that take it to covering the cost?
Yes, it was, the, if I remember correctly, the cost is one million, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The fee that I'm talking about raising brings us to one million, five hundred and forty thousand, so it's within thirty thousand dollars.
So what's been your biggest increase in cost in the past year, couple, couple of years?
Well, we've never had enough money to cover the cost completely. You know, it's, it's just been differential as it's raised over a couple of fiscal years, but nothing, nothing's changed. We haven't added a significant number of staff or anything like that. The, it's been about one point five million for the last several years.
But you have had increase, you had increase in salaries, correct?
Yes, there was a five percent salary.
You had five percent COLA, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? Do we have any more questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hastings?
I will say, I did, I did get multiple calls about this and questions from folks, wondering what the impetus was and why, you know, why we are considering this now, and then to what degree is this a per, you know, per month? Or, and to whom, who covers the cost? It'd be helpful if you could provide a little bit more background just to.
The fifty-five cents is, each phone would be increased, its annual fee would be, be increased by six dollars and sixty cents. So if you have one phone on your account, your bill will go up over the year, six dollars and sixty cents. Remember now, you are paying for every phone bill though, every, every phone line on the bill, and that changed in FY 20. And they held this in abeyance until we had a full fiscal year to see how much additional income was going to come in from that per-line charge as, as opposed to the per-account charge. And it did significantly raise it. It raised it from about five hundred thousand to the eight forty-six that I mentioned. So now, since that's happened, they're, they have allowed through the, the law for counties to consider if they want to do it, to raise it, to cover all the costs.
Any more questions? Mr.?
I was just going to say that, that, that part might be confusing to some folks. Why would a county, you know, choose not to or choose to raise the cost when they don't have to?
That's a decision for your, from, I'm bringing the proposal to you because the law permits us to request that. The administration supported that increase, and that's why I'm here.
And if the cost isn't, if we don't raise the cost, the, how is the cost then covered?
Through the general, through my general budget, the general fund.
Mr. Cameron?
So the increase matches your shortfall of six fifty-two, six ninety-eight exactly?
No, it does not. Misses about, about thirty thousand dollars out of one point five million.
It's, it's, so you still will have somewhat of a shortfall?
Yes, just thirty thousand dollars. It was, you know, but that can vary based on the number of phone numbers, too, from year to year. So the law doesn't say it has to be specific or match it exactly.
So I would, I would assume that if you were, you would implement this fee increase to raise the six hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars, that your budget, your operating budget will be reduced by that much next year?
The way I understand it is it will go down as a revenue cost, okay? And I don't know how the, I don't know how the county's going to manage that, but it's been the same thing we've done every year, where I put in my, my budget, operating budget, the revenue that's coming in from the 911.
I was just wondering, as far as your long-term plan is concerned, you know, with the new budgets, you know, with, in preparing for the new budget, if you knew, if you know that you will be increasing fees and your revenue from those fees will increase your operating budget by over six hundred thousand dollars, and I would assume that you would be, when you meet with the executive, and emergency services would not need that from the county, those funds from the county, the six hundred thousand dollars.
Right now, I do not believe that even the, the, so close to nine hundred thousand that we have is deducted from my overall budget, okay? It's considered as revenue that comes in, and I believe they manage the revenue in totality over the whole county budget. I can't speak for Ms. Olin about that directly, but I believe that's the way it's done. It's not specific to the department.
I suppose that would only stand true if you didn't have any increased cost, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Any unforeseen cost more? Budgets never go down.
I think that is a concern of the council members. If you increase the budget, six hundred, whatever thousand was, from this increase, is the, the annual budget going down by six hundred thousand each year from now on?
I will be putting in for the same amount, amount of money. They treat the revenue as a, I, I don't know how Ms. Olin treats potentially in totality the revenue that comes in. I don't know. I do know that I do not subtract that amount of money from my budget submission to the.
Ms. Ms. Olin?
Oh, there she is.
Sorry, I was downstairs. If I, I missed some of the questions coming up. So what I understand the question to be is, he'll submit his budget at what he needs. The revenue side of things, this additional revenue means that there is six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of, if I'm remembering the number right, of additional revenue that then can be used for other purposes within the county. Because this is not a segregated fund. He does not have revenue specifically for him. We have the general fund revenue in total. And so if we can offset these costs with a fee, that then there is additional revenue to help offset other costs within the county as a whole.
So the Department of Emergency Services budget will basically be the same as last year unless there's any increases. This funding will go in the general fund?
This funding will go in the general fund, which is where it goes currently. But what it does is allows us to have six hundred and, I'm sorry, I don't have the note. Is it six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in available funding for other projects throughout the general fund, which is all, which is all the other departments within the general fund? Your, you know, county council, administration. It means that we don't have, we have an additional source of revenue to help offset costs without, with only putting it on the people who are using the phones.
In this case, we already have an additional cost anyhow via the 911 system.
So this, this helps offset that.
Right.
I don't, I don't see how a fee that's been implemented on a phone system would be allowed to be distributed to any other source in the county other than the 911 system.
Well, because the issue, because this has always been, and again, he calculated it at less than the total cost, there is always a deficit. So if there's always a deficit, there's no, we're making up that deficit with other revenues. This will be, he calculated the amount, it will create a deficit still. We still have to make up the rest of his costs for his department.
I'm not quite sure about the budget, but it looks to me like it may be, it may represent a sixteen to seventeen percent increase in the budget for emergency services.
Now, emergency services is going to be flat. Revenue will go, the line item of revenue for this would go up. There's no additional cost in the emergency services department.
So what you're saying is, if you'd calculated this to be thirty thousand dollars over the cost of operation, you couldn't do this. It has to remain below the cost of operation because you're not allowed to make money.
We would have to look at whether or not we would have to segregate this revenue and set aside any additional revenue, yes. And again, the law allows you to, over time, cover your cost based on fluctuations.
Is there, is there a deadline on having to do this?
Yes.
Why?
Because the state has to notify all the nine, all the carriers so that they can implement it by July first. So if we want this to go into effect for fiscal year '22, we have to notify, I believe it's April first?
Yes, we have to notify the emergency numbers, Maryland 911 Board.
They have to have ninety days worth of notice. If we don't give them that notice, I believe the next time we can do this is next year, is '23. Fiscal '23.
And just a comment, it makes sense to cover our costs. And end of the day, that's all we're doing here is covering our cost.
Yes.
Any more questions? Mr. Hastings?
Just a quick comment, just in general, I mean, from the folks that I had that called me over the last couple of days, it's just, you know, not a good look in general, even if it's for, you know, at this point in time with, in the public. It may be a nominal amount of money, but that's not the way that it comes across to the public. Some folks just see like, oh, this is another fee that I have to tack on, even though it's literally only a couple, you know.
Six dollars a year.
Yeah. So I'm pointing that out as a, I have to reflect that from the constituents.
Mr. Davis?
Right now, are you having to take money from a general fund to cover his expenses?
Yes, we have to take the six hundred thousand dollars to balance his budget. Again, if you look at, again, the general fund is done in total, so there isn't specific revenues that tie to, but if, if you were to take each one of the budget departments, county council, we have to take a portion of our revenue to balance your budget. Finance department, sheriff's department, they don't have, there's not specific revenues. There is general fund revenues, and all of those things together have to balance the budget. As of right now, this fee, which we have the opportunity to help us balance his budget and not take it from other sources of revenue.
Exactly. Did you have a question? Any more questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of Resolution Number O Three dash 2021, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Opposed.
How many nays? One, two, three, and four nays? Ms. Harley?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Okay. I did want to recognize Mr. Murray from the Board of Ed, who came in a little bit late after we made the announcements, and Mr. Michael Stauffer, Chief Finance Officer and Operations Officer. All right. At this time, we're going to open the floor to public comments. Please limit any public comments that you have to three minutes, three minutes or less. And any presented material that may be submitted to the council members, please include ten copies. Do we have any public comments? Yes, ma'am? Yes, go to the podium, please.
It's actually a shame that our board members of Ed are leaving because this addresses them.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Eden Hayden. I'm a parent of students in Wycomico County Public School Systems. And I'm, I'm taking my time, but I'm speaking very passionately about my children's education or lack thereof. And I'm also an English teacher, not with Wycomico County, so I will try to stay within three minutes, but brevity is not my strength, so. Like I said, I'm here to advocate for my children's education. I'm not trying to be a whistleblower or a trendsetter, but it's time to unlock the school doors and reopen the schools to provide the children of Wycomico County with the in-person education that they deserve. Virtual, virtual education does not work. I know it because I'm a school teacher. Students are failing. Attendance rates are low. We can't find students. We're knocking on doors and they're not answering. So if it's happening in my school district, it's happening here. Countless studies have proven that virtual education does not work. Actual student experiences, virtual education prove this. This is why county school boards, such as Carroll County, have voted overwhelmingly for students' return to schools. Why? Why return to schools amid a pandemic? Because it is safe to do so. Studies have proven this. Schools are not super spreaders like they were once perceived to be. But what is the ultimate why? It's because. It's because it's what's best for kids, our kids, Waukesha County kids, kids who want to be and need to be in school. The past 10, almost 11 months have proven one thing. Virtual education is both inequitable and discriminatory against certain large demographics of parents and students. Countless studies have proven this. Experiences with online forums have proven this. Teachers are trying. I'm not saying they're not because we all are trying. It doesn't work. I've seen really good teachers struggle. I've seen really good teachers cry over the fact they can't reach students. Failing grades, low attendance rates, this lesser-than-education has left Waukesha County students less than proficient and they're performing below grade level. One such study by McKinsey &amp; Company found that, quote, "On average, students will be less than, will be, sorry, students will be half a year behind by the end of June unless action is taken to get them back in school. Students of color could be up to 12 months behind. Please, councilmen and women, do not leave Waukesha County's children and my children behind. Please show us that you care about our children and our children's education as much as we do." This is not Dr. Hamlin's school district. It is not the Board of Ed's school district. It is my school district, my children's school district. It is the taxpaying citizens' school district. Private schools as well as public schools from neighboring states have proven that a safe return to school is possible. All the local private schools have returned to five days a week of instruction with little to no problems. Again, these schools have proven that schools are not super spreaders of the virus, but you know what they are? They're a routine, they're a semblance of normalcy, and a safe haven in which young people can have a community of beloved friends and trusted adults. Since the beginning of the school year, there's been an incremental increase in Waukesha County private school's student population. You can look at the numbers. Waukesha County Public Schools' taxpaying citizens and parents are choosing to leave this lesser-than-virtual public education for the more substantial in-person private school education that those schools provide. In fact, my husband and I just recently, after the second closure, made the difficult decision as parents to unenroll our first grader from an elementary school that she once loved and enroll her in a private school. A private school that, mind you, did not have a first grade class until the 2021 school year and is now at full capacity. Other private schools and daycares have also capitalized on WCPS's choice to remain virtual and expanded their offerings to include school age grades. With each student's departure, WCPS loses more and more students and more and more money, money that could have been and should have been allocated towards providing an equitable and safe return to school. I question where and how the COVID funds are being allocated. I question where and how our tax dollars have been allocated in terms of providing my children the opportunity to attend in-person public school. As a parent, a high school English teacher with a master's in English and literature and a doctoral candidate who's earning my PhD in literature and criticism, I am informed and educated. Do not tell me otherwise. I witnessed a semester of WCPS's Zooms for my early childhood Ed children. This is what I and other taxpaying citizens are seeing as we facilitate our children's virtual education. I've seen a first grader log into Zoom in the backseat of his parents' car because his mother is at work. He's in the parking lot of her work in the backseat by himself. He's without school supplies. Per WCPS's policy, he must be logged in in order to have his attendance recorded. He is there, he's recorded, but is he engaged? Is he learning? I've seen on Zoom first graders who have fallen asleep during Zoom sessions. I've seen cameras consistently turned off, and they're consistently off. The students are there, they're recorded, but are they engaged? Are they learning? Citizens have been asked to fully fund our pre-K programs here. We readily agree and support funding for early childhood education, but on this virtual platform, I've seen a four-year-old rapidly spiral into tears because his daycare friends are engaging in hands-on activities, and he was committed to a three-hour Zoom class. Was this the intended use of our tax dollars? I've seen a six- or seven-year-old older sister struggle to help her ESL pre-K brother to not only understand the task that was being asked of him, but also I saw her search all over her house desperately trying to find the materials for the lesson. This student's parents are non-native speakers. The young boy's household is predominantly Spanish-speaking, and he is frustrated. He wants to learn, but he can't. He has two working parents who do not speak English and a sister who wants to help, but she has her own Zoom classes to attend. I can go on. I've heard of high school seniors who have not, have been accepted into colleges due to guidance counselor oversight, who have cried helpless tears because they do not know how to write the perfect college essay, who have stopped showing up to class because of unstable homes, mental health, younger siblings' needs. The list goes on and on. I'm here to tell you tonight that I've heard too many stories and too many frustrations from parents and students all over Waukesha County. My stories are in no way one perspective, but a perspective of far too many Waukesha County parents and children. At the beginning of the school year, my own first grader wanted so desperately to read, but over the month, her engagement with online learning waned. I took a 12-week absence of, from my teaching job, my own teaching job, because her education was that important to me. We spent hours on Zoom and even more hours with the asynchronous work. We did flashcards, we worked diligently through the PowerPoint slides on Google Classroom, we read dozens upon dozens of grade-level books. Often, these sessions ended with my daughter's frustrated tears, and I see often my own. I am an English teacher, a highly educated person with, with multiple degrees, a present and supportive parent of public school education, of my children's education, and even I couldn't figure out the magic trick of early childhood education and how to teach my child to read. She needed to be in a classroom with an experienced first-grade teacher and among her peers. After WCPS closed after a week and a half of hybrid learning for first graders, our daughter was devastated. We knew how desperate she was to learn, so we enrolled, we finally enrolled her in a private school after the Thanksgiving holiday. Within days, her love of learning returned, her love of school returned. She comes home with stories and tells me all the things that she learned, things she just learned about snow or something today, I don't know. She talks a lot. Within a week, she was reading eighteen spelling tests and working hard to ace her timed math quizzes. She was cutting out snowflakes, making Christmas cards for her family, and playing at recess. School is no longer a chore of signing into a Zoom, struggling to remain engaged for three or more hours, and moving text boxes around Google Classroom. School is now a multi-dimensional experience that was academic, social, physical, and mental, as it should be. How is this virtual education robust, as Dr. Hamlin continues to call it? How is this education equitable, as the school board's education equity policy requires it to be? According to Waukesha County's Board of Education's education equity policy, the board clearly states that the school must, quote, "Regardless of a student's socioeconomic status," that means working parents, two working parents who cannot be home with their children for virtual education, "ensure each student the opportunity for success in our school system," and that, quote, "Each school will provide every student equitable access, resource, and support for the educational rigor that is designed to maximize the student's academic success and socio-emotional well-being," end quote. How can students have equitable access if parents have to work? You can give a student resources, but what if that student is not a native speaker, has special needs, cannot read, and/or lacks parental support at home?
Ms. Eden, can you wrap it up?
I'm almost done. I promise.
It's been 10 minutes.
Okay. How can educational rigor be achieved without student engagement? As the equity policy states, academic success is not only achieved if a student's social and emotional well-being is taken into account. I've read the studies, I've read the science. Virtual learning only detaches one from his, his or her peers, disconnects him from his or her community of trusted and loved adults, and removes routine and stability from a young person's life. All, and that shows that you care, as much as we do. We elected, sorry, I just lost my spot. I want to get to, um, so we elected you on platforms that demonstrated you all want to do what's best for Waukesha County. I, I, I just say, if you, if you need, if you, I've just, I've lost my spot. Now I'm like trying to find out what my ask, my ask is. Hold on, hold on. All right, men and women at the council, here's my direct ask. Until WCPS provides an equitable and nondiscriminatory educational service to all the students in Waukesha County, please withhold your funding. She comes in here and asks for funding when the students aren't even at the schools that the funding is for. In fact, allocate the funding instead to parents who need to send their children to expensive private schools in order for our children to receive the educational services that they require to learn and deserve. We are taxpaying citizens, we are paying taxes for a lesser-than-educational service, a service that is far from robust in terms of offering a multi-dimensional educational experience. Refund us. We elected you all on platforms that demonstrated you all want to do what's best for Waukesha County. Waukesha County citizens like myself and my husband will remember whether you have been good stewards of our tax dollars and listen to our voice in the best interest of all WCPS parents, teachers, and students. Shows you care as much as we do about Waukesha County taxpayers, about our public schools, about our children, and the future of Waukesha County, because that's where our education is.
I do want to point out that we are required by the state to meet maintenance of effort. We are required to fund the schools by state law.
But a lot of other counties are figuring out if you have to send your kids somewhere else, and I know Dr., or sorry, Mr. Trump passed an executive order in terms of that, but it doesn't cover families that aren't minority, that aren't, you know, certain socioeconomic status. I mean, if our tax dollars are going to the schools and the schools aren't open, I think there's better use of that tax money.
Thank you, I appreciate your passion. Do we have any more public comments? Yes, John?
Good evening. My name is John Rankin. I'm a resident of Salisbury, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about the, eliminating the sale of wine from county dispensaries and moving it over to private, privately-owned businesses, in which I have experienced. Five years ago, I joined the Wine Rack as the wine manager, and later I became a distributor for Tenth Harvest Wines in Baltimore. I'm opposed to the dispensaries continuing to sell wine and eventually liquor on the grounds that it's unfair competition to the companies that invest in providing that product to the public, and also because in this dispatch story from the December 25th issue, Mr. DeWalt, who is with the Waukesha County Control Board, he gave reasons for continuing the status quo, and I find the reasons to be weak. One of the arguments that he presents is that there has been a lack of complaints for private businesses, and that some of the county council members have not heard any complaints. Well, I'm here to complain to you tonight, so you've all heard one complaint. I think there's many more out there, too, and if we need a grassroots effort to make that happen, I think that can be arranged. Another argument that they gave, he gave, was removing wine products would lead to layoffs, and the third reason was that the stores brought $899,000 of revenue to the county. I was wondering about that one in the sense that is that actual profit, or is the $899,000 revenue beyond the expenses that it, that it involves to operate the stores? I'm told that it is above expenses, so it's a profit. Laying off employees is not the nightmare that Mr. Ewald describes. If wine sales are reserved for private businesses, demand for wine will move from the dispensaries to the private stores. As demand there increases, they will need experienced employees like those that are used by the county right now for the same purpose. So really, these employees, they've been moved from job A to job A just at a different employer. The less of four employees, the loss of four employees in this issue should not be the decisive factor in making a decision. As far as the stores bringing in, bringing in that much money, it seems hard for me to calculate the very small percentage that those $899,000 represent in the total overall county budget, which is in the millions and millions. I feel that continuing the status quo because of a claim that the county has no way to replace lost revenue to be weak, I think that there are ways that this can be done. By removing wine from the shelves of three dispensaries and later closing all three to end the competition posed by them, any reduction in revenue would be offset by a corresponding reduction in the expenses, plus, plus with a difference of a small amount. And I urge the county council to keep this matter open and begin planning now for removing wines from Waukesha County dispensaries effective January 1, 2022. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Do we have any more public comments?
My name is Eileen Johnson, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Is Mr. Psada here today? He's not here tonight, is he? Okay.
I'm listening now.
So I just want to thank you for speaking out as a parent and as a teacher, and I, I don't think there's a parent in 2020 who could speak publicly about their kids in education and not dissolve into tears, which I did at the last meeting I was at with Mr. Psada and the council, some of the council members were there. It's an incredibly, it's just excruciatingly painful situation. So I can really sympathize with you and with other parents who are going through this, and kids. You guys have the ear of the Health Department as council members, and what I'm worried about is that fall 2021 is going to come along, and our teachers still aren't going to be vaccinated. So I'm asking that you use your powers, council members and prominent members of the community, to advocate for teachers to be in line. We need people who are involved in the criminal justice system to be vaccinated because they're getting sick and they're dying, and people in nursing homes, people who are at high risk, elderly. And the governor has said that essential workers will be face to, face to, probably 2A, 2B. So I think everybody in the country has been a little bit alarmed by how, by how slow the rollout of the vaccinations have been, and I've been encouraged just within the past few days, hearing about different people in the community who have gotten vaccinated, who I know are on the front lines, but who aren't technically healthcare workers, because it seems like they're just, they're saying, okay, now we need, we get the vaccinations, we're going to get them out in the community. So if we can vaccinate our teachers, then there's more of a chance that we'll open up by the fall 2021. I understand that the board has the, and the superintendent have the, the fear of teachers getting sick and dying, and that's a very real fear. But we have seen with private schools that they have been able to open, and there is not much evidence of spread within the schools, as long as they really carefully follow those safety protocols. And the school system has a unique challenge because they're dealing with 15,000 students, and it's a much larger amount of students and staff. So I ask that you use what power you have to advocate for those teachers to get in line fast, and when you're speaking to the Health Department Director, ask her, when is that going to happen? Can you tell me at what point the teachers will be vaccinated? Hopefully also, once teachers are vaccinated, if schools open in the fall, we can work to do widespread testing of students. Why aren't we talking about that? Why aren't we work? One thing that's frustrated me since the beginning is it doesn't seem like our representatives are working as hard as they can to get widespread testing in our community and to use that as a tool to stop outbreaks. I think the Health Department's absolutely working their butts off to do everything they can to protect us, and we're so grateful. So just, I just want you to keep that in mind, to advocate for, please, for vaccinations for teachers and staff, and if some teachers want to stay home because they're high risk, they can stay home. No teacher should be asked to teach virtually and in person at the same time. Students who want to stay home and teachers who want to stay home should be paired up, and teachers who want to be there and students who want to be there should be paired up. It's absolutely ridiculous to me that we're asking teachers to do both at the same time. No one wins. So also, if you could advocate for widespread testing of students, I feel like we need to be creative and innovative. If we have extra funding, why not use it to, to, as an emergency effort, update our HVAC systems and figure out ways to open windows? Because we should have been thinking about this months ago, but we're still going to be dealing with this virus for years. So we have, these are things we're actually going to have to do. I don't know if it would still make sense to do partitions, but some of the private schools have done that in their classrooms. Outdoor eating areas, there's different innovative ways we can deal with this. They could be in school for three hours a day and not do any eating. We could come up with new solutions, new ways to get them together so that they're with other kids. We could come up with new solutions, new ways to get them together so that they're with other kids. It is absolutely devastating, the losses for young kids. So I want to also just thank Acting Director Sada for listening. I noticed that he, at the last meeting, he's taking notes, he's listening. And we're so appreciative of that, and that's a big deal. And thank you for developing a good relationship with the superintendent. That's a very big deal. A good relationship with the council, that's a really big deal. And thank the acting county executive for funding the superintendent and board's request for the capital improvement projects for fiscal 2022. That's a big deal. We're so grateful and so appreciative for this. I'm also here to ask that the council, the county executive, and the sheriff's office work together to figure out a way to get that estimate for the new sheriff's building back down to the original estimate, which was $11 million. It has ballooned to $30 million, and I'm not sure how that happened, what happened, what, what changed? Did it have anything to do with the change in government and the change in our county executive? We don't want to be in the position of competing as education advocates with law enforcement. There's a high level of, we do know that there's a high level of law enforcement officers in our county. These issues can be complicated, and it's important not to have knee jerk reactions. And we need to listen and compromise. We need to fund law enforcement, and we need to fund public education. We need to pay both officers and teachers competitive wages so we can recruit and retain high quality officers and teachers. We have a problem with both. So the capital improvement plan involves building structures and facilities. I understand that. I can't help but think, when I see that $19 million figure for the sheriff's office going towards the sheriff's capital improvement and the $16 million towards the board of education, I can't help but think of when this room was filled with Mardella Middle and High School families who showed up en masse and cried and told their stories about their buildings and who had been doing that for decades. And they settled for renovations because they realized that there was not going to be any action. So they compromised and they said, we're just going to do renovations. We're not going to do a whole new building, even though all of us want them to have a new building. They settled for renovations. And you guys have all figured out a way to make that happen. And we are so grateful for you for compromising and working with the board and the superintendent and everybody to make that happen. And I think now we are going to wait and see how you compromise to figure out how to get that sheriff's building lower. And I think that as long as we have permanent portable trailers as classrooms, crumbling buildings, leaking and broken roofs, broken HVAC systems, mold and middle issues, outdated, unworkable buildings for our children, you know, Mardella students taking tests in an 85 degree room, then the sheriff's office will have to wait. And we will wait for you to work together to bring down the cost of this. Many residents are not happy with the idea of $16 million going toward our 15,000 students in our county and $19 million going towards the sheriff's department. We don't accept the status quo, and we look forward to a time when the superintendent can actually ask for the funding that she needs. She has compromised. She's been strategic in what she asks for. And I don't know, maybe you can inform me, but I don't know of any compromise that the sheriff's office has made. And I ask that you put aside, you know, any, any, if you're able to bring down that sheriff's building cost in any way, I ask that it be devoted to our children. There's going to be catastrophic losses from this year. We know that. Already we see that kids are not reading at the level they need to be reading. Really, I can't emphasize enough about how this is affecting young kids. And I think everybody here wants kids in school. But we at the local level, I think we actually have power to do something about it. And so I ask that you just fight as hard as you can as far as combating the virus to get our kids back in school. And then fight as hard as you can to compromise and figure out a way to bring down that sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments? Okay. Hand it to Ms. Hurley, and she'll be glad to hand it out.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amber Green. I'm a resident of Salisbury. I'm also the director of an organization called Phoenix Tree Project. We are, we have been very grateful and blessed to be funded by our county to operate a youth drop-in center for homeless youth. It is a lot of, it's a lot of work that has been done since we have been funded for this drop-in center. And what we have been able to see and what we have been able to learn is that we need a lot more help when addressing homelessness in our community, specifically when we're talking about youth homelessness. Now, since the pandemic has happened, it has opened our eyes to many agencies, many departments across the country that there are disparities when it comes to services given to our country. One of those disparities also means homelessness. Right now, African Americans make up just 13% of our population. However, they are representing 40% of homelessness, including 50% of homeless families. That is a problem. And when we look at our rural community, we already know that resources are already lacking. We also know that there are agencies who are overworked, and we are asking for help. And when I say we, I mean the youth that I'm serving. I serve youth under the age of 25. I currently, right now, have a client who is age 19, and he's staying in a camp. I also have youth who are living with relatives, and because of whatever's going on, the stress of pandemic or whatever, they're being kicked out. I have a 12-year-old and her grandmother being said that they have to get out by, by February. Where can they go? There is no affordable housing. There are limited beds in our shelters. And even then, with our shelters that we have, they serve a great need. However, we need a federally funded shelter in our county. We do not have time for personal policies to impact those who get beds. I had to tell a family that they cannot get a bed inside of a shelter because they did not have a marriage license. I don't know what 18 and 19-year-old is going to get married, but that should not have kept them from a bed. We need to address this. And I think that as a director of an organization, though we are not political, I do think I need to come to our politicians. I do think that we need to ask for more help. And in that, I think that we can take off the models that are being done in different areas, not even far away, but even if we look at our city of Salisbury. Their housing first program is only being funded by just $100,000, and they are providing houses for 13 families. Imagine what we can do with multiple $100,000 and how many families that we can provide permanent housing. I think that a first step that we can do as a county is have a county homeless task force to address certain needs. One of those needs is possibly creating an entire new department to address homeless services. We need help. And when I say we, I am talking about the youth who I'm serving. I'm also talking about the parents who I'm helping. I'm talking about the young adults who need help. And that being said, I'm not going to take your time, but I laid out the facts as well. You can find, anybody can look at these facts on the National Homelessness and End Homelessness, the national website. You can find that the data is there. Youth, African Americans, specifically our youth, are overrepresented in our homeless community. And in fact, we are overrepresented in every systematic oppression. When we look at our foster care system, black youth are overrepresented. When we look at our incarceration rates, black men, black women are overrepresented. When we look at housing and affordable housing, black families are overrepresented in our poverty. And what that means is, those are the different things that lead to homelessness. Those are the things that lead to someone staying outside. And so I am urging the county council, the county executive, somebody, to please help me, help the youth that I'm serving, and please just do more. And I'm requesting and probably proposing that you guys enact a homeless task force. If it cannot come from a homeless task force, then please create a Waukesha County Human Rights Advisory Committee. That would be great too, because I would love to go to them, and possibly they could recommend it to you guys. But I do believe that there's more that this county council can do. There's more that our county can do, and I just urge you to do it because there are people dying outside. Due to the COVID pandemic, I know of seven people who have died outside. That is a problem. We have the right to housing. We have the right to live a life. And because we are not making morbid effort, we are failing a lot of people. The most vulnerable population is not getting resources, and we have to fix that. And I'm urging those who have voted in their seats and who are sitting behind us to please do more. Because at the end of the day, I will help these kids. I will help these families. And I will do it by any means necessary, and I have been doing it. And I continue to just join me in that fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Amber, just to expand a little bit on your, on your comments, especially regarding homelessness, one of the immediate needs that we have to address, I mean, as we sit here, is we're having people in our community that are homeless and that have tested positive. And when they're testing positive, you know, they can't go to the shelters. And there's nowhere for them to go.
That is correct.
And this is an immediate issue that needs to be, we need to find a location or somewhere that can house homeless who have tested positive. Because they need that, you know, they got to be able to quarantine somewhere, and that doesn't exist right now.
That is correct. As of right now, those, the cold weather shelter that our county operates can only take about 30 men. Now, those men have been tested. And now if any of those men find that they are tested positive, they will be asked to remove. They also have been asked to be vaccinated. If they refuse to be vaccinated, they will be asked to leave. Now, we also know that vaccines and everything, that's a hard, touchy topic when we're talking to our African American community. Even though it's a tough and it's touchy topic, that does not mean we ignore it. We have to address this issue. And because we have not addressed these issues, we have not addressed the disparities well before this pandemic, we are seeing this explode in our faces. And you're right, there's absolutely no place for those who test positive where they can go. I have always thrown around, what about the civic center? It's been sitting there. I've gotten a lot of things saying it can't possibly happen. But I also know that Booth Street, that's an affordable housing area. It was closed down, some down, taken down for, to put up new affordable housing. Those apartments are still vacant. And I'm just wondering, what are we going to do with those? I know they may look bad. It's the projects. It's caused blight. There's an SAT word for you. But these, this is open housing that I think that we can utilize. So again, I'm just proposing that maybe we create a task force for the county to really address homelessness as a whole. And then also look at the different action steps to specifically look at the racial disparities when it's coming to homelessness.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Do we have any more public comments? Any more public comments? Is there anyone out in the hall that would like to speak? Thank you. All right, this time we can move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments? Mr. Hastings. I see everybody inching their hands up. Mr. Hastings.
Well, I just want to say, certainly COVID-19 has definitely exposed, not just exposed the cracks, but just ripped them wide open, the cracks we have in healthcare and, in education, infrastructure, housing, you name it. Thank you, Ms. Hayden, Ms. Green, Ms. Johnson, others who come out to speak, to speak tonight. You know, we've had 20 new cases of COVID, pardon me, 20 new people die, Waukesha County residents, since we last met. And I don't doubt part of that is because of the, you know, being out in the cold for some of them. We, on top of that too, also need, I think we also, as a, as a community, really need to start to refocus again on mental illness. And, you know, we, I saw a stat online from before the pandemic had began. In the last 20 years, we'd had a rise in suicides in the United States, which is unlike other countries, a rise in suicide of 35%. And, and now I've seen a dramatic spike in suicides over the last year during the pandemic. And more, and more recently, just heard the bad news of Tommy Raskin, Congressman Raskin's son. I don't know if anyone read that online. It was a pretty amazing piece that they put together. But it's, what I'm getting at is that we really need to, just like some of the folks have already said, we really need to focus on how much this, this pandemic is really now starting to pull apart, you know, the fabric of, of our communities. And we really need to do everything we can to try to, to address that. So, and to the folks that are out there that have put forward suggestions, I definitely could say the council is listening, that we want to, we want to help revive. We've been trying to work behind the scenes as many, as much as possible with the different groups that are on the ground, but we certainly need to continue to do more. So, thank you.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I always like to say, I really like to thank the individuals that spoke tonight. Very, very valuable insight as far as your perspective, and that's very beneficial to the council as a whole. I think it does warrant that we, we continue to work with the Board of Education and the Health Department to see where we, where we need to go. You know, specifically, some of the comments made as far as the fact that, you know, there is significant, I would say, proof or significant concerns that the students aren't learning properly. I know I see mothers who are employed, and I'm just astounded as to how the heck are you employed and still able to have your children going to school? And I do find that confusing, and, you know, if you're not on the front line, you don't get it. The individuals that spoke tonight, I appreciate that because that helps us understand a little more carefully what is happening on the front line. And I think we need to, to address this in more detail with the Board of Education. I have 100% confidence, as, as all of you suggested. I have 100% confidence also in the Board of Education and Dr. Hanlon, but I do think it warrants further discussion on how we should address this. In regard to the sheriff's department, I understand the concern as far as, you know, a project that's going from $16 million to $30 million. We all had questions here at the council. We did, I think, our due diligence in trying to review that. I believe it was two, three, two or three years ago that another architecture firm came before us, and they had the same numbers. And we, we somewhat laughed them off and said, you know, we can't do this. Rethink it. And two years later, another firm came back with almost the exact same numbers. So it leads me to believe that initially, what the sheriff may have felt was a satisfactory number really wasn't a satisfactory number to what was truly needed. And we did receive documentation from the architects that pretty much showed that, based on a comparison per square footage, that it was pretty much in line with what, what other law enforcement groups are, are doing and the costs that are involved to, for those improvements. I just wanted to make that, that point as well. The other thing I would say is, John, you spoke about the $900,000. I haven't read the article yet, but the 900 includes all sales, liquor and wine. I would imagine that the wine is just a small, very, very small portion of that 900,000. I would hope it were such, because I would hate to think that if it were a large number, then that would mean that they are, that we are competing to even a greater extent with the private industry, which I am totally 100% not in favor of. So, and again, thanks to all the individuals that spoke tonight. I've been in a lot of meetings in my life, and I think tonight was very, very forceful, very productive as far as the input we got from the public. So thank you very much.
Ms. Ackley.
Yes, I wanted to thank everyone for coming and much passion in the room. Much passion, and what I took away from this was citizens who care about this county and want to be part of the solution, that you're here to work with us, work with the school board, work with the county executive to, to get these, get a solution to our problems. And that's such a refreshing thing to see. So thank you all for coming. And I, I hope we can, we can move forward in getting the different issues addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more council comments? Mr. McCain.
Actually, just a quick comment, if you'll bear with me for a minute. I want to share a quick story just to maybe shed a little positivity on. I think we all can use that sometimes, and my Rotary Club meets every week at the Civic Center. And the Civic Center folks do just a fabulous job helping us deal with trying to social distance. And, you know, they serve us lunch, and they space out the room, and they actually bring the food so that we don't have to go through like a buffet line, et cetera. And they've been, you know, having to do this ever since, you know, the spring. And our club, annually, we always do a collection for like a gratuity to give to them during the holidays to thank them as a token of our appreciation. So as usual, we did that this year, and we presented it to them during the Christmas season. What I want to share is, these employees of ours here in the county, they refused that. They said they did not want that, that there was people out here had greater needs than they had. And they wanted that money to go to, they actually suggested we send that to the food bank. They said there's people out there that need that much more than they do. And it was just very touching to us. I mean, they were very, we were very adamant about giving that to them because of what they've done for us all year, and they were more adamant to us that they would not, they wanted that to go somewhere where it was needed more. So actually, today, we presented a check to the Maryland Food Bank on their behalf and as an appreciation to them. as an appreciation to them. So I just thought that was quite noteworthy, some folks here that, you know, work for Wycomico County and, you know, I just can't thank them enough for their gratitude.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
All right, I do want to thank everyone that showed up today and especially the speakers. We as council members, we're limited at what we can do, but we listen and we continue to advocate for each and every one of you. So thank you again for that and I know we have a new year here and we're getting ready to start our budget, so we're going to be pretty busy and hopefully we'll be able to continue to meet like this, but we are going to be watching those numbers. We have an in-house COVID person over there that keeps us up to date on the numbers, so hopefully we'll continue to do this so we won't have to go to Zoom. It's hard to accomplish things, get things done with Zoom because Zoom doesn't always work and I didn't mean to say that to prove a point, but, but thank you for that. All right, at this time, I need a motion to, and a second to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions followed by a closed work session pursuant to the general provisions article, section 3-305B8, to get an update on pending litigation to protect the attorney-client privilege and to meet in an administrative closed session pursuant to section 30104 of the general provisions article to discuss internal auditor project updates and council administrator direction. Do we have a motion?
Smooth, second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll be back with the open close, the open session, then we'll go to the closed session. Okay, at this time, we'd like to reconvene with the open work session. We're going to have a discussion on invasive species management with Ms. Victoria Spice, Species Coordinator, Invasive Species Coordinator with the Lower Shore Land Trust and Dr. Judith Striblin, it's hard to speak with this thing, Chairperson, Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. So, thank you. If you would introduce each of your names, so everyone will know you for the record.
Sure. I'm Victoria Spice, I'm the Invasive Species Coordinator with the Lower Shore Land Trust.
And Judith Striblin, I'm the Chair of Wycomico County Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee.
Thank you, President Dodd and council for having us tonight. I'm going to keep it very brief, so we'll go ahead and get started. So again, on behalf of the Lower Shore Land Trust and the Natural Resource Conservation Advisory Committee, thank you so much for your leadership council and the opportunity to give you guys a brief update on what we've accomplished so far. How do I do this?
You just want to hit page down on the arrows, yeah.
So you're on up there.
Oh, we see, okay. So to date, the county has invested, in 2019, the county invested $25,000 to fund an interim invasive species coordinator to build the partnership for regional invasive species management and to apply for the Chesapeake Bay Trust Outreach and Restoration Grant. So we were able to use that $25,000 as a match and leverage an additional $72,000 towards this initiative. We began work at Pemberton Park and we identified another restoration site. In 2020, the county invested an additional $19,000 to continue funding the invasive species coordinator, to again form this partnership and build an app for tracking invasives and continue the restoration at Pemberton Park and Leonard's Mill Park. So as you can see, a tremendous amount of time, money and effort has gone into this initiative and it's really because of places like Pemberton Historical Park, which is a reminder about how disastrous it can be when we ignore invasive species. So the picture to the left was taken in spring 2019, we had over 12 acres of wisteria blanketing the forest at Pemberton Park. This was after about, we estimate four to five years of just letting wisteria kind of go. So in the winter of 2019, we were able to work with the County Parks Department and mow paths throughout the park and to really unveil the forest so we can see and analyze the forest health and see what we're working with. And then between the spring and summer, or I'm sorry, spring and fall of 2020, we did three herbicide applications to Pemberton and we identified kind of the next phase of management for this project. So we're going to be moving into a tree removal phase over this winter and spring and some selective cutting. So on the other side of town at Leonard's Mill Park, we had one and a half acres of Japanese knotweed infested along the banks of the creek. So this invasive species was so dense that there really was no fishing access along the creek and the creek banks were actually beginning to erode, increasing the sediment and into the creek itself. So you can see, oops, you can see in spring 2020 what it looked like and then fall 2020. So we were able to do, that was just after one treatment, so we hope to do an additional treatment and eradicate that species at that park.
How did it get there?
So invasive species are very invasive, so more than likely it was from another seed source down the bank or that was transported through the water, also because of just the proximity to Route 50, it could have been from the roadways. It's really no one point location for where it could have come.
Okay.
I do know that I did get a call from a landowner or a person who noticed any Japanese knotweed infestation behind coals and so it looks like it has spread kind of back there as well, so just down the creek a little bit.
Okay.
So with your support to date, again, we've continued to the treatment of over 13 acres at some of our county parks. We've recognized that invasive species are a major problem in the county alone, landowners, farmers individually can't solve the problem, so we've banned together over 20 partners to form the Partnership for Regional Invasive Species. These are federal, state, county, nonprofit partners to form this prism, which we've also created a steering committee and a work group. We've identified a new restoration project from, you know, leveraging these kind of, this network at Cypress Park in Pokemoke City and we've identified funding for that project to take place this spring. We've developed fact sheets and a comprehensive 80-page document on some treatment and management efforts for landowners, for land managers to be able to use to manage invasive species. We've leveraged support from some municipalities on this effort, such as Pokemoke City and the city of Salisbury. We've identified an app for tracking invasive, so we can really understand the extent of the problem we have here on the lower shore and have begun logging those. We've scheduled training modules, tutorials for county park employees and three other partner groups for species identification, treatment protocols. And we've developed an outreach campaign to our Lower Shore Land Trust easement grant tours, members and volunteers to kind of get the word out about invasive species. So looking forward, we're going to again continue to expand the capability of the prism by adding additional partners. We're going to adapt the training modules to reach a broader audience so we can reach more people. We're going to identify, continue to identify unique funding sources so we can continue the removal and restoration of invasive species on county, public and private lands. And most importantly, we want to establish a self-sustaining management program for invasive species. So that's really going to be a lot of needs to kind of get that self-sustaining program up and running, so we hope to be able to meet with the county executive to discuss what that may look like in the next coming weeks. And that is all I have for my presentation tonight. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions for Ms. Spice? Ms. Ackley?
I wanted to thank you for being here. I, my daughter and I had the privilege to go on one of the tours that Mr. Wallston did at Pemberton Park with the invasive species. It was incredibly, it was just amazing to me.
Eye-opening, right?
So much that my daughter made my front yard into a native plant. I'm just kidding.
Yes, sir.
So that was, some of my question is, is there any partner, education partnerships that you're doing locally?
So we do have this outreach component, which is going to be partnering with some of our, maybe not youth education, but partnering with some of our, like Wycomico Environmental Trust, the Nanticook Watershed Alliance, to train some of their volunteers on invasive species identification and removal and restoration and how to replace those invasives with natives. So that's kind of where we're focusing our outreach efforts is more on some of our other environmental organizations and their volunteers and members.
Just, I just ask that you keep that in mind and somehow reaching our youth, we do have a youth advisory council now within the county and so I know that that would probably be something they would have interest in.
Absolutely. I think that these sites especially have a lot of potential to demonstrate just how disastrous, like I said, invasive species can be and how critical they are to, to get managed, especially for the youth to see.
Do we have any more comments? Mr. Cannon?
I'd only say, I was on the same tour with Councilwoman Ackley and it was a great tour, we had a, very informative and, Bill, were you on it too?
Yes.
Yeah, Bill was there too. And it was very informative, so I'm glad to see there's been some progress. I found, you know, in going through this tour, I just personally thought it was very overwhelming to see what we had to, what we had to do. I'm glad to see the successes that you've demonstrated in some of the, in the presentation you've given us. I was surprised at the numbers as far as the funding is concerned, it seemed to me very low and I would, I would certainly think that there could be or should be more funding to address this considering what the long-term problems could be if we don't address it right away and make it happen, so I would take that into consideration as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
Yeah, I want to thank Victoria and Judith for being here. In fact, I'm the council member that serves on the Natural Resource Advisory Committee and I've been on the committee since we actually started the committee in 2008 and, you know, I can say, you know, this is, I think, one of the biggest achievements that, you know, we've been able to do and it's amazing, kind of alluding to what you said, Mr. Cannon, me for the small amount of money, you know, how you've been able to leverage that and accomplish, you know, what we can, because the issue with invasive species is just so prevalent throughout the county. You know, I'll just use that example of wisteria, you know, you ride around our rural roads, you'll just see multiple places where the infestation is just dramatic and, you know, that example in Pemberton, I wish we had the picture of that same woodlands back, you know, six or seven years ago when it, I mean, that was a mature woodlands. And, you know, then also once it got infested with the wisteria, I mean, it just totally, you know, killed all the, killed all the trees and you see that, but you see pockets of this all over the county, so, you know, I think that education aspect, particularly for our private landowners, you know, to recognize that and then be able to educate them and help them combat these invasive species because, you know, it's just, it's something we have to live with and it may be an ongoing battle because it's, you know, just very prevalent.
All right, are there any more comments? I also see that wisteria all over the county in different residential areas and it gets me how some of the property owners will cut the grass around it and let that grow. If it was me, I'd declaw right through it.
I think one thing that really struck our committee early on, a number of years ago, our forestry representative on the committee was the one who brought this to our attention and said, we need to do something now, is the economic harm that it causes as well. You know, I mean, it's, it's damaging to our ecosystems, to our natural forests and it's really damaging to our agricultural and forestry economies as well.
That's right.
Forward with, with greater funding and get more work done.
And that's a, and that's a great example, Judith. I had a landowner, not just a couple of months ago, that was an out-of-town landowner and this was just through my business, but had asked to go look at a piece of property, a piece of woodland and when I, it was in Tyuskin and I went to the track of land, I mean, I had to call him, say, when was the last time you were here? And he said, well, I haven't been there in 15 or 20 years. So I sent him some pictures. I mean, the wisteria just taking over the whole track. I mean, it was just, you know, his timber was just, he had no timber. I mean, it was just taken over by wisteria.
Ms. Holloway?
Is bamboo considered an invasive species? It is.
Bamboo, yes. It's everywhere.
It is everywhere now.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, any more comments? Well, thank you, Dr. Striblin and Ms. Spice.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Good presentation, thank you. All right, at this time, we have forest conservation easement of .108 acres to be relocated off-site at a two-to-one ratio at 133 Paddock Drive Fruitland. Mr. Tyler Wallston, environmental planner.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. As the council president stated, we have a simple easement relocation here. The survey they prepared, the site plan was from Park and Associates. It's for Alvera and Ryan Ogburn on 133 Paddock Drive. The size of the property is .34 acres. The applicant is requesting permission to relocate the forest conservation easement that is located on the property. Currently, the site has an area of .08 acres and an FCA easement. The applicant requests that the .08 acres of the easement be relocated off-site. The owner has requested that the existing FCA easement be relocated. Since the relocation is proposed to occur off-site, the owner must relocate the easement at a two-to-one ratio. Staff recommends approval of this project since FCA requirements will be satisfied elsewhere off-site.
Okay. Do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Cannon?
I'd only say, Tyler, I appreciate your efforts to make this happen and whatever you can do to, to move this as quickly as possible, that would be great. I'd appreciate that as well. Thanks.
Any more questions? Okay, no more questions. Ms. Hurley, this requires a public hearing?
It does. We can have that public hearing on February the 2nd at 6:00 PM.
February 2nd at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a work session on the letter of support for proposed changes to the Class B beer, wine and liquor golf course license for Wycomico County Board of Licensed Commissioners. I see we have some commission members here. So if you would introduce yourselves.
Yes, good evening, council. James Allen, Wycomico County Board License Commission Chairman.
Christine Travis, the board's administrative secretary.
Can you introduce your members in the back so that they don't have to come up and shuffle around?
Yes, newly appointed commissioners, Karen, Carolyn Hall and Alan Hudson.
Welcome, Mr. Hudson, and good to see you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Again, thank you for hearing this, this evening. The board submitted a letter to the council dated December 10th. Is that something you all have?
Yes.
That letter's request was specifically to address the proposed change that the board would, is requesting the council to support a change in the alcohol beverage laws, specifically a Class B beer, wine, liquor license for golf course. The current requirements for that particular license as of 2005 also includes a food and beverage requirement, that being at least 51% food sales being greater than alcohol sales. Typically, a licensed premise with this requirement, we would allow three periods of operation to establish the business, establish that relationship and ratio between their food service and alcohol service. For the golf course, however, they have not been able to maintain that relationship and typically after about three cycles, a recommendation to change the license to something that does not, you know, have that requirement of 51, 50 or 51% food sales over alcohol. At this time, what we're proposing for the 2021 legislative session is to change or remove that food and beverage requirement, or ratio, and allow the, the golf course to operate without that requirement.
According to your letter, prior to 2005, there was no food or alcohol beverage ratio required. What did they do in the last 15 years?
The last 15 years, again, it was, it was inconsistent and...
Inconsistent?
Yes. And... Yes, and it's just not practical, and it's not something they've been able to maintain that level of food service there.
Have any council comments, Mr. Davis?
Why was it imposed in 2005?
That I cannot answer. I, I don't know the reasoning behind that.
I was early on with the board at the time, and I cannot recall the rationale of them adding the food and beverage requirement. A golf course is required to maintain an 18-hole golf course in order to have that license. If they can't maintain 18 holes, then they can't have the license.
Mr. Holloway, or are you done, Mr. Davis?
My problem is, if, if we do, if you start saying that no food is going to be required with the license, what's going to prevent any other establishment, like restaurants and bars, to come in and say they want it removed from their license too?
Well, the, a golf course operation is typically not there for the primary purpose of, of lunch or dinner. It's, it's a sporting facility. And in this case, particularly the, the, the one that we have here in Wycomico County, Nutter's Crossing, it's, it's not promoted as a, a lunch or dinner.
Excuse me, if you could just speak a little bit closer into the microphone, thank you.
Yeah, and kind of watch when you turn your head, because when you turn your head, you turn away from the mic, and it, it's already muffled with the mask. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
But again, and even the Nutter's Crossing is not even promoted as a, a lunch or dinner facility.
Mr. Holloway? Press your button.
Button. I say, don't they have a kitchen and restaurant facilities there? I mean, I've, I've been there, so, I, I share Ernie's concern. I think you're opening up, I think you're letting the camel's nose get under the tent here a little bit. You know, different bars, I won't name any, but consider that are self-sports bars. So when you're saying this is a sporting facility, which it is, a golf course, I think some of them can, could come along and say, "Well, you know, we're a sports bar," or, you know, "We have darts and pool tables, so we're, we're sports also." So I think you're really kind of opening up the can of worms here to...
Mr. Holloway, can I interject there?
Sure.
We have Class D, as in dog tavern licenses. We don't require them to sell food, they choose to do so on their own. Now, restaurants, when they come in as a restaurant in the state side of the alcohol beverage code, it clearly states that a restaurant must sell more food than alcohol. When you come in for a restaurant license, you're telling the board that you are promoting yourself as a restaurant primarily. Now, we have restaurants that have a restaurant license, that their restaurant, but by nine, 10 o'clock, they turn into an evening entertainment. They are required to still sell more food than alcohol. Golf courses are never primarily promoted as a restaurant, as a destination to go dining. Link's Food has a small cafe, and they struggle. And if they don't make their food requirement, then they would be required to change their class of license to a D. So they would have to lose the liquor in order to keep all ages on the, to be able to go golfing. Or if they kept the liquor, then nobody under 21 can be on the premise, and you would actually essentially kill that golf course.
Any, any restaurant, bar, whatever, can come in here today and say they're struggling. Every, they all are, so do we relax the rules for everybody? I mean, I understand why.
We're not talking about under this COVID situation, we're talking long-term. And I've seen the numbers from, from restaurants from the COVID situation.
Is Class B a liquor license or just a beer and wine?
You have two types of restaurants, you have a beer/wine restaurant and a beer/wine liquor restaurant, and both require more food than alcohol. And we have had restaurants to have to change their license.
And Tavern is a Class D?
D as in David, yes.
And they're not required to sell more food?
I don't care if they sell one hot dog or plated dinners.
Do you, can you give an example of a tavern?
The warehouse across from the college in the, next to Bank of America. Rositia, who is on Roland Avenue, right down from Tended Yum. We don't have that many tavern licenses, most of them are restaurants.
Okay.
And they do, they have to report every six months. I send out reports, and they have to report their food and beverage. Now, if one month they sell more alcohol than food, we, we don't smack them around.
Sure.
But this is an establishment that is struggling. They're, they're missing four out of six months. They're selling 60% alcohol versus 40% food. We don't want to force them to be a D, because that will really kill their golf.
Okay, Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, I appreciate you all coming here, it's kind of refreshing to see that somebody wants to reverse some of these regulations. This is just a classic example of an antiquated system, in my opinion, where things need to be changed, you know, changed and, and modernized. The, the restaurants and bars, people go there to eat and drink, period, that's what they do. When you go to a golf course, you go to golf. You don't go to sit down, and you don't go to eat. I golf, I don't drink, but I golf. And I don't go to, I never go to a golf course to sit down and eat. So it's not, it's not really, I think, the environment really doesn't lend itself for someone to come in and get 50%, you know, to have a 50% ratio, it's, it's ridiculous. So, you know, I applaud you for being here, and, you know, in reference to what you were saying, Joe, these restaurants are failing in, in the local, in the local area. Nutter's does not open its restaurant, it's not open. You, you can go in there, and now it's sort of relegated to going and getting snacks and sodas or whatever, but they do not serve food there anymore.
I guess that explains why they can't meet the food requirement then, right?
Yeah, right, exactly. And it's, and it's, and it's not because they don't want to, it's because it's not a moneymaker. And as, as, as has been explained to, to us here tonight, it's not a moneymaker for a golf course to try to sell food, you lose, you lose a fortune. And there's, it's not just Nutter's, there are other golf courses that are suffering just as, just as much. So, in my opinion, you know, if somebody wants to play golf, let them, let them golf. If they want to drink, let them drink. It's not, it's not such an irresponsible thing, it's not as crazy as it was when we were passing laws like blue laws and stuff like that, it's antiquated. And I really applaud you all for seeing that and trying to do something for the industry.
All right, Ms. Ackley?
So, just, just so I'm clear on this, tavern, the tavern license, that does not allow for anyone under the age of 21?
If you have the liquor portion.
Okay, so the golf course would have the liquor portion, and it could be...
Nobody under 21, so you couldn't take your daughter if she was 18. So you both golf. And so we, we, we forced Link's, we call it Link's, to change their license, because they can't make their F and Bs. And what will happen is if they choose to keep the liquor, which a lot of people like their mixed drinks, just not their beer, but they like mixed drinks, nobody under 21 could be there. So if you and your daughter golf, and your daughter's 18, you can no longer take her.
You couldn't take her to golf, or you couldn't take her to the where they're, they're serving the alcohol?
You couldn't take her golfing, because the golf course would be part of the licensed premise.
But isn't that a, a, a residential community too? So how could you deny access to somebody being on a community because you're not, because of that license?
If it's a licensed premise, and it's a Class D as in David Tavern, beer/wine liquor, access would be denied.
You're just saying tavern, but you're looking at a golf course, a golf course isn't a tavern, the golf course is on the outside.
That's if we keep it as a B and get rid of the F and B.
Yes, but you're saying if it's a tavern, so you're serving alcohol in the building, the golf course is out here, so you're going to sell me that because you're selling liquor in this building, I can't bring an underage person out to play golf?
Ernie, Ernie, they drive, they sell it off the golf cart out on the golf course too. They take the alcohol out on the golf course and sell it.
The entire premise is licensed for the alcohol.
Sell it outside on the 18 holes. In other words, I don't play golf, but I talk to people.
In a residential community?
Oh, yeah.
I would like to see why it wasn't put in in 2005, why it wasn't forced to, to serve food.
I'd only been on the board as an employee for a couple of years, and those board members have been, I, I, I can't answer for why. I looked it up in the notes in our office and found when it was placed in 2005.
I just, just have a problem with it, because I'm a retired police officer, and you're going to tell me that you're going to start, I mean, the reason why most of these establishments with these licenses, they serve food, is to try to consume some of this alcohol that they're taking in. So now you're going to tell them they can go out and golf all day and drink, and then leave? And I, I'm quite sure that the legislators in the NAF is going to have a problem with this when you take this food out.
We're not saying they can't serve food, that would be their choice.
Yeah, I know that, but you're taking it out, so they're not going to be forced to serve it.
I think most golf courses will still continue to serve food.
Well, you just told us that they're closed, they don't eat open.
That's probably because of COVID and the reduced capacity of inside dining.
Well, most of our golf courses, and we'll use Nutter's again as an example, I mean, it's a snack. I mean, they're really just serving snacks, I mean, that's why they can't meet the 51%. I mean, they're not doing entrees or anything like that, and there's no restaurant time. You know, they're not doing anything in the evenings or anything, so... And this is, I guess also for a little clarification, because I know we keep kind of comparing this to restaurants and so forth, I mean, this is specific just to the golf course. This is just, I mean, we're only talking about golf course licensed Class B here. So, you know, so removing that is pretty, you know, I kind of gave back what John said earlier, it just seems pretty, you know, I, I'm trying to think of some unforeseen circumstance, and I can't think of anything, you know, it seems pretty innocuous.
When people come into the office and everybody wants a restaurant license, because they can have the beer/wine liquor, and they can have the, all the ages. And I remind them, if you sell a $5 burger and an $8 craft beer, you have just sold more alcohol than food. It goes by gross sales. And, and Nutter's just has a little cafe with sandwiches.
Ms. Ackley?
I'm just, is it just for this one particular golf course, or is this for all?
Any golf course in Wycomico County, we have two, only two currently now licensed as a golf course.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Hastings?
Just a thought, would it be helpful to find out what other counties do for their golf courses?
We can do that.
Just to, you know, find out whether we're not a step or instep or...
Yeah, Mr. Hastings?
And just to be clear, the $2,200 annual license fee, that doesn't change under this?
There will be no fiscal impact, zero.
And in case I missed it, the, what was, one again, was the impetus for this change, where you as a body reviewing this and thought, "This is something that we could take care of," or did an individual from the public come forward and...
When we do any proposed changes to the alcohol beverage laws, Annapolis likes the local delegation's support. They want to make sure we have the executive support, the county council's support, then we...
What was the, pardon me, what was the, the reason for bringing this up? Why did, just curious, how did this particular situation come about?
We're faced with a decision of making Link's change their license, and we don't want to be detrimental to a business that's already struggling at this current time. And golf courses are not a destination for dinner, and we could not find any rhyme or reason why it was added in 2005. And I researched all the notes in the office looking for that.
Yeah, there may have been the best of intentions, but it's honestly, it's the wrong venue. This is outdoor sports, and I don't see where you should have mandates on how much you eat with outdoor sports, doesn't, doesn't work.
What do baseball stadiums require?
They, the stadium does have a food and beverage requirement, but you're buying a $10 hot dog and an $8 beer, and...
A $10 hot dog and an $8 beer?
Yeah.
So the hot dog's more expensive?
Yeah.
I, I do want to say I have mixed feelings on it, and I think Mr. Davis brought up a, a good concern about opening that can of worms, about everybody wanting to come get their change too, and I'm just wondering why they can't come up with a special class for the golf courses?
It's a special class, it's a Class B golf course.
That's, you know, that's what, that's what this is, this is the special class.
Yeah, I, I'm not involved in a lot of drinking, so I don't pay attention to the different classes.
But I mean, I'm talking about the law, the law is, this is a special for golf courses.
And it's statewide that you have to sell more food than alcohol in restaurants.
I didn't even know the golf courses had people riding around on golf carts selling alcohol. So that was new to me, so, do we have any more comments on this, Joe?
I do, and, and I agree with John and Bill both on, on different aspects of this. The laws are antiquated, but I can tell you, when you, when you relax this, you're going to have every license holder in Wycomico County, and if I was one of them, I'd be in, in line, trying to get my license changed, because, because of the COVID, for one thing, it's hurting their businesses, you know, they can't seat enough people. And it's not going to recover when these masks come off. So that's where I'm at on this, you know, and I agree with Ernie, you know, it's, um, you know, you're going to have people out there drinking all day and not eating anything, and, you know, that could, that could result in some tragedies, but...
That can happen when it's a Class D.
I understand that.
And that's what I know.
That doesn't make it, that doesn't say we need to make it easier, so, anyway.
All right, the question I have as well is, you're looking for support from the county executive's office as well, what have they said?
I've reached out to them, and they haven't gotten back to us yet, but I'm supposed to be getting a reply this week.
So, since you haven't gotten back to them, we really can't make a decision today, anyway. I do like the idea of what Mr. Taylor said, looking at other counties and seeing what they do with the liquor license. Are you guys aware right offhand?
Yes, I don't have the notes on me, but they're back in the office.
I can't, I understand.
I don't have the notes on me, but they are back in the office. I already did reach out the other 23 directions.
So you can't, you don't have it right offhand?
The counties do them differently. Some of the, some of the counties license golf course as restaurants, forcing them to have a food requirement and expanding the license premise to include the 18. And the others, some of them do not require the F and B.
Okay.
But I can actually get you the exact counties.
That would be nice to know, Mr. Holloway?
So if this license is changed, does that mean people under 18 can't go play golf? Did I misunderstand that?
That would be the choice of Link's. Link's would have to either give up the liquor, and you can only get beer and wine on the golf course, allowing all ages, or if they wanted to keep the liquor, nobody under 21.
You're meaning, when you say Link's, I'm, I'm not a golf, I don't play golf.
Of course.
Nutter's.
So you're saying the whole golf course has got to make a decision whether, if they want this license, that people under 21 cannot be on the premises playing golf? So it's going to be an adult-only golf course?
Well, they will have several decisions. Do they want to license the, the golf course? Or they want to make all their players not be able to drink on the golf course? Do they want to give up the liquor? Do they just want to have beer and wine? Do they want to prevent people under 21? They will have to make a decision, but that will be on them, which way they go.
That's what I was saying, they'll have to make a decision when they apply for this license, whether they're going to allow anybody under 21 on that golf course or not, correct?
If we don't make the, the change to relieve the current license of the F and B requirement?
I don't understand what you're saying there. I miss that.
Sounds like me.
I'll just ask a question, if they change their license to what you're asking for, okay, does that mean that no one under 21 can go on that golf course?
I don't know which way they want to go. We haven't even proposed this to them about making them, saying, "Look, I have three years' worth of your data, and you can't make your F and Bs." So we haven't approached them yet to say, "You have to change your license."
So this isn't been instigated by the golf course, this is being instigated by you?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I thought the golf course approached you first. Okay, now, another question on the same line, how many golf courses are like Nutter's that sell the same alcohol?
We only have two licensed golf courses, which is Green Hill.
Green Hill and...
And, and Nutter's.
Okay, I knew of those two, I didn't know if there are any additions.
Pretty much has not been operational, but that was more due to COVID.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Mr. Hastings?
Well, I just want to close it out with, first of all, thanking everybody for being here, but also especially thanking the continued service of Carolyn Hall, who's, you know, former city council president, wife of John Hall, whom I, seat I hold, and just an amazing human being and neighbor, so happy to have her here.
Yes, thank you. So what does the council want to do? Do you want to get more information and discuss it another time? Is that okay with you guys?
Absolutely.
All right, you guys on board? Well, again, and I want to reiterate what Mr. Hastings said, I want to thank you... Well, again, um, and I want to reiterate what Mr. Hastings said, I want to thank you all for what you do. Sort of like the police officers, you really don't get the respect that you deserve, but you guys do a good job. So thank you very much and we'll look forward to having you on the agenda again.
And we're, and we're going to need you to do that pretty soon because you, you want to introduce this in the legislature, so.
Yeah, uh, and I was thinking about checking with them to see if they want to be on the next meeting for a work session.
Right, because we can get the answers to these questions.
Right, so hopefully we'll get this information to us by then.
Haven't heard from the executive's office either, so.
Right, we've got to get the, the support from the executive's office as well, so thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Have a safe one. All right, next up, we have a letter of support for the proposed Horizon program. Mr. John Posoda, is he here? If not, we can talk about it without him. On your desk, you should have a copy of a letter or two. Who wants to start off discussing this?
I'm glad it was re-edited. It's much more succinct and I'm 100% in favor of it. Let's get moving on it.
All right.
Letter is pretty simple, you know, and pretty, uh, you know, it's not committing us to anything. I mean, it's just, you know, showing our support and giving us a tool in our toolbox if we choose to go that route. So it's pretty, like John says, pretty succinct, so.
I'd like to see us have a public hearing on this.
Mr. Holloway, you need to speak.
I say I'd like to see us have a public hearing on this. I mean, we're talking about, um, proposing something that could potentially give, um, pretty large tax incentive to somebody. And, um, tonight we had, um, we had a public hearing on, um, on the phone, on the phone bills, which was just a few hundred thousand dollar increase. And this is talking about the possibility of giving away a million dollars in tax abatement. So I think it would be wise if we could schedule a public hearing for the next council meeting.
This is, this is just a letter. I mean, a public hearing might be necessary when we get to a legislative point where we're trying to introduce something, but we're just, we're just sending a letter asking for enabling legislation.
But we're sending a letter endorsing, um, endorsing a, um, pretty large, um, tax abatement. And, um, I think that would be, um, you know, pretty wise to be able to have the public on both sides or either side if they wanted to come in and talk, and speak of this. It'll be good.
I have to say, I was, I was very surprised by this document too and how this is going to be affecting the downtown. I mean, they're asking for more affordable housing. This isn't providing that. And I understand this is what the city has decided on, but this, they're asking the county to get on board with them. I'm, I'm really shocked by this, so I would agree with having a public hearing.
You want a public?
You know, but by endorsing this letter, and, and I realize what everybody's saying, oh, it doesn't obligate us. And it doesn't. By, but by endorsing it, it gives us, it gives the seal of approval from this council. And, you know, it does, it doesn't obligate us, but it does send a message. You know, tonight we didn't vote to, um, we didn't vote to raise the taxes on the phone. But yet we're going to send a letter of endorsement to give millions of dollars in tax rebates or abatements to, um, different, um, corporations that want to build something in the city of Salisbury. And I, you know, I've got problems with that. I, I won't be supporting it anyway, but I think that it would be a good idea that, um, we could have a public hearing.
All right.
I voted against the, the phone charge because that is a tax on the people. This isn't a tax on anyone. This is nothing more than an incentive that's being created to encourage development. And these aren't, these aren't taxes that are out there right now that we're pulling away and giving to someone. This money hasn't even, hasn't even come to fruition yet.
I realize that, John. I know what it was, but we had a public hearing on, on what we did tonight, is what I'm saying. And I think this is, this is justified for a public hearing. It really is.
No, I think, what I think should be, would be justified for a public hearing is when the council itself, if we were to ever get there, the council itself might choose what scheduling we might want to create and actually create the incentives for the tax breaks. That would, should have, and I'm sure it would require a public hearing because you're talking about taxpayers' funding. But this is just a letter enabling the county to do this. And the city's already vetted this with the public.
And if we do this, we should do it on our own, not, not, not injunction with the city, so.
It's, it's, it allows us to do it whenever we choose.
Why don't we wait till we have a plan in place to implement it? I mean, I don't think getting enabling legislation with no plan is really the most, the best use of government. It doesn't, we're opening this up and leaving it.
I mean, I guess my question is, how are we going to do a plan in time for, to get this in front of the legislature?
Why, why is there a, is there a clock ticking? I mean-
Yes, there's a clock.
We need to have a plan.
Legislature could start session and when you, Carl's there, when you start.
But why does it need, I don't understand what needs to be done now. If we don't have a, why don't we take the time to develop a plan for the county and then move forward with getting legislation?
You have to have enabling legislation to do a plan.
So you can't develop a plan? You have to first get the legislation and then come up with a plan?
You can, but we don't have a plan.
Okay, so then why don't we focus on getting a plan and then get the legislation?
Well, I would love to focus on getting a plan, but we got people sitting here saying they're going to oppose this regardless, so.
Okay, well, let, I mean, let them do it if that's what they choose to do. I just, I don't understand why we're putting the county on this, this letter, when we don't even have a plan. We're just-
And we don't need a plan to get enabling legislation to give us the opportunity for us to create a plan.
So, so then why wouldn't we get a plan and then get the legislation?
You're just talking in circles, but that's-
I have to, I have to agree. I mean, why would we, why would we want to be part of an enabling legislation? And it says at this time, we seek an enabling legislation so we may consider offering a residential tax credit program. When the legislators get this, they're going to say, what do they want to do?
Right, well, what we want to do and what we should be doing is we're trying to improve our community in Wycomico County. We're trying to incentivize and promote development in our downtown of Salisbury.
And though I don't disagree with you on that, I would just like to see a plan of what we're going to do before we get enabling legislation. It just seems like it's, we're just throwing something out there and then we're going to have this open legislation to do whatever. No, we have to have a plan.
Well, the plan would be very similar to what we already have. The plan would be similar to an enterprise zone, which we approve every day. It's the exact same plan, except for this is for, for hotels and residential, but it's the same plan. The city of Salisbury has a very detailed plan that we spent an hour here talking to them about the plan. Our plan is not going to vary much, we're not going to vary much from what they've already presented. So I think it's quite obvious what, what our intent would be and what we would try to accomplish.
Mr. Hastings?
That gives clarity, that's the plan.
Yeah. Mr. Hastings, you can go next.
Well, I just hear Ms. Hurley is trying to speak in.
Ms. Harley?
I just wanted to go over some, um, of the dates for the general assembly. They do start session on, um, January the 13th. And the Senate in House bill request guarantee date is actually January the 19th. So that's why it's very, it's time set.
John, you said our plan is going to be very similar to the city's plan? That, that's why I'm opposing it.
No, Joe, that's why I'd love to have it in a work session.
That's a two, that's a $2 million, you know, $2 million tax break on this, on this one project.
Of, of $2 million, it doesn't exist.
That's right.
Nothing exists right now. You're getting about 28,000, Joe, instead of 900.
Yeah, that's correct. So you're going to, you're going to create, you're going to create the $75 million, they say $75 million, um, in the completion of all the projects? And you're going to give all these people free taxes for, not completely for 20 years, but for the first five years while everybody else in this zone or in this city, in this county pays a full load of taxes?
We're never going to really, John, that's okay, but, uh, you know, Councilman Ackley is asking for a plan. What I'm saying, I didn't say we had a final product. I said we have a plan. Obviously, you're not going to be in favor, no matter how we try to negotiate it. There's many ways you can try to work it. But that is the plan, to try to give tax incentives over a certain period of time graduated, which is what the city's doing and which is what the enterprise zone does, so.
Okay, Mr. Hastings has been waiting patiently.
No, I, uh, you know, I just was, I think there's two things that I'm hearing. First of all, we've got, uh, a separate conversation, I think with the council saying that they want a separate conversation as to if we go forward, what we do, what our plan looks like. Here before us is just a letter of support for the city of Salisbury in moving forward. It, the deadline that is actually ticking is, uh, first thing we know about legislative session is that it's going to be a shorter legislative session and the guaranteed date only being two weeks from today. So if we don't, if we don't get something, and which by the way, would be the next time we meet, the 19th.
Right.
We really have to, if we want to support the city of Salisbury and what they're doing now, and to basically put this for the legislature, we need to, we need to kind of, we need to move on it now. And then, but that, that, I, I think what would be very helpful and very important would be, I would love to see us, uh, actually, uh, talk about going forward. I mean, I'd rather have a bigger conversation and open work session with the developers that are mentioned here, the seven projects, and then try to figure out from there, what do we want as a county? But, but for here and now, for what's before us, we just need to support the city of Salisbury. If this were any other municipality and they were, had a request, you know, we would listen to them and support them. This is what, you know, this is just going forward. So I, I think we should support.
You said the drop dead was the 19th, but we have a meeting that morning.